I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, no call.
Interest?
Here.
President?
Here.
Police?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have a form, sir.
Okay, the motion to accept the consent agenda items. Make a motion, a second.
A second.
Uh, Almond Baker.
Adam, right.
Right. Of course, okay. Uh, next item is the citizens' opportunity for comment. Citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. This agenda item sets aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. Please understand that the council will not take any action on your comments at this meeting in accordance with Iowa's open meetings law. The mayor and the city council welcome your comments. Welcome comments from the public pursuant to the adopted rule of procedure of the Almond City Council. At no time is it appropriate to use profane obscene language or signage. The mayor may limit each speaker to five minutes. This is an opportunity for anybody who wants to address the council.
I would. Mr. Parsons? This is the line that I want to pop out just in case it's skipping around a little bit. Engineering, right?
Yes. Yeah.
It kind of applies to you. This is about the, uh, the stormwater changes plan for the north part of Almond. And, uh, what the stated intention of those is this will not fix that. It's just going to make more problems for some of us that we don't, uh, don't already have. The, uh, flooded basements is what I told this is supposed to solve. And it's not even, it's not going to do anything for that. Because our problem up north in town is the high water table. It's only about six feet underground. Well, guess where everybody's basement floor is at? It's at six foot. So putting this in there, it's going to make some of your people's yards purtier. But I was looking at the plans and you're looking at hooking people's sub pumps into these drains. And it's going to dump into my backyard year round. Because people's sub pumps run year round. So the city's going to be responsible to take care of that in the long run. Short run, long run, whatever you want to call it. It's just, this is not, this is going to make what we'll do the problem that so many thinks there is, it's going to get worse.
The city of Sheldon did this several years ago and it has helped everybody up there tremendously on the situation that we're addressing here in Almond today. You go up and talk to them, them people up there in that town, my brother lives up there. They used to have standing water everywhere. They put in them, uh, tubes to inlet it and get it out of town quicker than sitting it and letting it run through the whole town. And it has helped them tremendously. It hasn't cured the problem, everything, but he says they're way better off with what they did. And they didn't do the whole town, they did, uh, critical areas, so.
And where, where, where is that water going? Is it going from one part of town and being dumped into another part of town?
No, it's going to, uh, out of town, just like what we're going to do with it. And get it out of town instead of running through town, over town. It's going through the pipes and out of town.
This is not, this is taking it and dumping it into my backyard.
It, it, it's where it goes.
Right.
Already.
But right now, a lot of it is soaking into the ground before it gets to me. The only time I get the water is when there's a three, four, or five inch rain. That's the only time I get water. Now I'm going to get water 24/7, 3/6/5 because of people's sub pumps going into these, these pipes and dumping it in my backyard because that's where the pipe ends, is in my backyard.
Well, we'll have to see how that works out.
We, uh, none of us up here table for, for that fact, anybody in town is, is, uh, is an engineer. And the city hired an engineering company to, uh, design this, uh, repair. And, uh, and that's something new for Almond because we've always kind of done it ourselves individually and it's not quite worked. And so I, I'm going to put, and ask the council to put, uh, their faith in the, uh, in the engineering company, uh, P. St. Kent, that it has taken on this project. And I, I fully believe that they will, they will watch it real close, they will stand by it. We have contingency plan, um, if, if something, uh, we do or the project does that, that adversely affects any resident, uh, you know, we will help mitigate that. I don't know if the council has anything else.
I think it's going to help you. I want to tell you why.
It's not going to help me at all.
They're going to have to regrade a lot of these yards and stuff. My backyard's probably filled in quite a bit over the years. The grass gets taller, deeper, and keep filling it. If they regrade that, that water is going to run away from the yard. If they do it right, so they go your yard, drain past your yard, down to the ditch. It's all got to be an elevation change. So a lot of this will swell out, shouldn't have any standing water if they do it right.
It's not the standing water, it's the continual water being pumped, being pumped in onto the, onto the ground in my backyard. It'll get there and just some pump water will soak in the ground in a 20-foot area, however far it needs to go to soak in, and it's just going to always be wet, which is not right now.
Maybe we'll have them investigate a little bit and if we have to, play our data history from where the sub pumps run into, right past your yard. Go that way, go that route.
Lauren, he's, he's speaking of the, the city's water easement that runs behind his property.
That's.
On the north side, on the north side.
I'm not sure where he lives.
Martin's, yeah.
He's the old parsonage, the church old parsonage. The church old parsonage is where he lives. Is that the arson?
Yeah.
This is the section on the map that was shown as overland flow. And, I mean, like you said, there's going to be grading going on. It's going to be, if it turns out to be a problem, I'm sure it will get addressed.
Maybe we'll get these a tip, go and look at your problems, see what, what we're guessing a little different. We've got a little bit of money here, let's work with it that way.
Project gets squashed.
What are we looking at?
We'll look at it.
Was, um, adding more openings to the tile system that's already underground, was that something that was part of the consideration?
I think.
I know it's only like a six inch pipe that runs underneath there, but.
So there's a.
I think a lot of what's screwed out, we're supposed to be originally was, you probably didn't have water 20 years ago, or 25 years ago, did you? Did you have much?
I've got, I've got a sub pump that runs in my house 24, or runs all the year round. In wet seasons, cold seasons, drought, it runs all the time.
It might not be able to get the water tables down low enough, but still we can look at.
None of this is going to do that. There's nothing the city's going to be able to do to knock the water table down unless they figure out a way to drill down in the aquifer and pull the water out from down there. They're not going to go through that, nobody can, so.
Mr. Parsons, if I could use your mind just a little so that the main topic you're speaking of going through town, there's, there's clean outs about every 100, 125 foot. I go through every year and jet those out. I've got the tank in my truck right now for that. And a couple of years ago, it was an issue because the outlet had collapsed. Prepared on a joint project with the county, so we do have water flow. Unfortunately, that's only one tile that, that runs throughout the entirety of that, this portion of the town. I think there's only two, two connections to it, um, on Forest Street, and that's, and that's it. So it's, it's a very minimal system.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what runs underneath the old alleyway back there.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm calling it, the water, so.
It's the down there, that's, that's where that main line runs down through. Then there's another line that comes from the school, from underneath there, from, uh, from the ballparks and all that, there's sections, something that runs from there down to, uh, between me and the church. Then they connect in the back corner and go underneath halfway, so it's, it's out that way, which is pretty much the same flow of what the waters always went.
Maybe Logan might go look at tomorrow, pad that tomorrow, see if he can help the engineers come up with a plan a little better. So I think we can do something. Might be perfect.
All right, sir? My big thing is just knowing that my sub pump runs and I've got to take care of my water. You're taking everybody else's sub pumps that are draining in those ditches and they're , it's dumping into my backyard, the way this, like, plan's being created at this point.
Yeah, I, I think my progress over the years, the ground's not being graded out right. So, yeah, let's, maybe Logan will look at tomorrow.
And just the fact that everybody's pumping, pumping there all the time, the water, the ground's gotten saturated in the ditch, but I think ground at the upper level, so it just doesn't soak in very well.
It probably recycles it anyway, so.
Well, we, we all hope it's not really bad. We hope we're pumping it far enough away from the house, kind of like everybody's dance house.
Wait. All right, um, is there anybody else here that needs to address the council? Seeing none, we'll open, uh, we'll cancel the, uh, open comment part of the meeting and we'll go to the action discussion items. You have in front of you the sheriff's department report and we have a deputy here. Do you have any question? Don't think we have any questions for you.
No.
Just those high-speed chases early in the morning.
It's one of those.
One hundred and thirty-four, there, I'll write it here. Okay, um.
Anything else, Charlie? Is he ready to throw? Thanks, Charlie, appreciate it.
We have, uh, we have Mike Lilly here from, uh, we have Mike Lilly here from P. St. Kent. And Mike's been working a long time on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it's, uh, probably, probably kind of, sort of, ahead to review the public.
This is, this is.
Report about the planning commission.
Yeah, this is, uh, still has to be adopted by the council, so just having that in mind, uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, what's his draft here? Turn it over to Mike.
Yep, I had said that the conference of plans, the center of the plan is on commission. And maybe we could, we'll figure out on it reasonably, but we should probably, uh, we, we need to have public input into it and maybe contact some property owners. Maybe it will help us to get more support and pursue the policy decisions. And, uh, regarding that, um, I, this week I got to get a proposal with that Elkhart to update their conference of plan. And I want to push, you know, we were together to get a regional wastewater treatment plan. And, uh, I've given them information, I think they're getting to a point where, just to give you an update, they have land plot for three setups, uh, lagoons or setups. And they have two of them. And they accommodate 750 population equipment, 750 people. So basically, right now, they have a 1,500 population. The U.S. Census Bureau, they, they've, they've developed a housing, they have such a good incentive early, they have this Kimberly Woods development, that acts for the 1,000,000 people. So that'll push them, they anticipate that will be developed by the end of the decade. That'll push them to 3,200. So like they said, they have 1,500 capacity. If they add another lagoon, it'll get them up to 2,250. That'll just take it to the end of the decade. And he's got another 128 acres he's working on plans for right now. So, and that could take up up to 3,000 people. So in other words, what they have there can't handle it. So here's a prime time to work with them and to pursue. We met with them when we were proposing using their site. I don't think they wanted that. They have, they had land, there's houses that are on that area. So I need to talk to them more about that. They have been addressing infrastructure issues because of the population growth. And, uh, I think, we had that meeting, uh, Brad, is that what it is? He, uh, you know, he seemed negative, but whenever you throw something in front of somebody, you know, the first reaction, it seems like all we ever experienced or had, most people, they kind of react, they, because they haven't thought about it. But in that meeting we had, he did, because we were, in that we had proposed a regional move down in the Scump River basin. And we're having the county help us with that, we'd have, we met with them anyway. Anyway, he commented, he preferred the Scump River basin. So, um, if we can get them on board to pursue that, and my idea would be that, uh, what county would build the reg, why the land build a regional facility, that'd be a future regional wastewater treatment site that eventually would be part of the WRA or.
It's over there at Scump River?
In the Scump River basin.
Okay.
If you think, uh, Elkhart, that's a lot down the bottom there. You go to the right side, left side, they get into flood plain, but that, there's a lot of land down there. And that they could buy for a future regional that would cover hundreds, you know, northern Pope County, you know, Almond, Elkhart, uh, even eastern, there's an area in Aitken that under complex that just have, hey, because it flows east into the Scump River, it's not covered under their wastewater treatment plants or system. So if we work together, I think we got a good shot at getting the county on board. I want to show you, you know, uh, did you think, well, how did this benefit whole county or whoever? I had put this together, I had started on it last year, and then, and then moved it in. But this has, this, this is a couple of tables, I was starting it up, so it's all my own and there's no contract part of it. I'll hand this around, this is a tax benefit from developing. That's to a full green plus, uh, who benefits from, uh, public sewer system? Well, I'll take this.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Lauren, please one. Oh. You got one?
Yeah. So this is just.
I got one.
But this looks, this, these are top, uh, as far as public jurisdictions that receive property taxes. And, uh, but, uh, this is last year's. I, I don't have the new ones, they did this last year. But as you can see, at that, all, there's 38.17 per thousand, which is a tax home. And for a single-family residential, actually, all the residential gets a rollback that in the past, you get apartments, it's like commercially assessed, but anyway, this is a taxable value. I went through all these assessors through the amount, went through all these commercial and housing and tried to get an average. And if you think the average for a single-family is like three units an acre, which is that R.170, would be about, you know, $400,000 a home. And then with the rollbacks, uh, going from 1.2, 1,500,000, it goes down to a taxable 580,000. And then as you go down all those commercial sites, zoning, uh, classifications, the, uh, rollback is much less, I think it's 90%. So anyway, this top table four basically shows what each jurisdiction receives of that total revenue in taxes. And, uh, well, North Pope School District receives the most, but if you took Pope County, those other ones, it's more than the city of Almond. And you think about it, Almond has to provide all these services. You know, I mean, the, you're responsible for all the services, but you don't get the taxes that, uh, everybody else gets. So the next page, I took that and I looked at, and we, I had, uh, I had to figure out, or look, figure out what the acreage were in this top plan, full development. And I went down, I, I cut back on the single family because you'll have schools and this does not include parks, but, you know, like churches and things, that'll take up land and just, it won't be efficient, so. The other ones I kept because normally it'll add commercial or whatever. But I took those acreage, but then I took, and I looked at full development with those acreages and revenues. And you can look at the bottom from all, from that full development, you know, that's going to be a gradual, but look at the money received in today's dollars, uh, by those jurisdictions. So who benefits? That's one, then you got employment, it looks the tax revenues that we generate. And we really can't do that full, this plan without public sewer. So there's, there's, if you look at Pope County also, I have, I have under tables, but in 2000, no, it was, it was 19, 1980s, mid 1980s, I was working for West Moynihan, I was a city planner, county director there. I really became in maps and, uh, the, I don't know if you know where Methodist West Hospital is, and that area, there was 160 acres. That was the first land that ever had extended Dallas County, and it was maps property. And, uh, that was in the mid 80s and really is commercial, so nothing happened. But the population growth, uh, after that happened, you started seeing other, uh, Clive and Urbandale, they started annexing west. And then later on, La Quipoca. But all that, but prior to that, all the development west was in Pope County. Now it's nearly all in Dallas County. And an argument is that Pope County needs to create a new front for economic development, maybe a new western suburbs. Alone, Aitken, they only had so much land. I think when they annexed, I read in the paper, I think it was Eric Jensen said something, they had 11 and 100 acres available. Normally, they develop 600 acres a year. If you had more land, um, you know, in Elkhart, in Almond, available, which I think we have that in Almond, actually, they have that Elkhart too. Because if you look at the land ownership, there's investors out there, just like here. So we can open up this northern suburbs and start bringing back the economic growth in Pope County that they had lost. And that's a good argument, and you can show it statistically. And just like here too. So part of it is to build that case to Pope County, basically you're making a case to the public, that why is this justified? I remember we met with Bob Renell, and actually Bob Rice, he was public works director, suggested we build a regional one, pursue that instead of us building our own. So that didn't.
Okay, I'm for under pipeline, clear order, Elkhart.
Yeah.
I'm for this. But I want it also physically big enough to handle future developments, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure you got it in there, this thing here is in there.
Well, here, I'm going to pan this up. This is from this sewer study.
So I'm having a hard time, uh, picturing 9,000 acres. How many acres are in a mile, a mile?
640. Our plan here is 17 square miles.
So 17 square miles is 9,000 acres?
No.
That's what you're saying, you're going to have to have.
You got open space, you got, uh, the residential areas are already, don't exist, that exists. But you have open spaces.
I'm not worried about that, just how many acres in a mile?
640.
And then, so 640 into 9,000 would give us the?
That's about 15 square miles.
That's 15 square miles.
Yeah, about, so. Versus a 17. Now, when, eventually you'll add another miles going to the county, line which we did, then you got 22 square miles, and Urbandale's told us that it's 22 square miles, but they have a lot, they got woven period, and they got a lot of, you know, inefficient land, but anyway, so. Your house is going, oh, yeah. This is a cost estimate. Well, you got everybody's done with it?
Scott, we've one.
Okay, listen to the rest of the, do you want one of these?
I don't.
Okay. Now, if you look at the top half here, that Almond, all is Elkhart.
Yeah, those two guys, Mike.
Oh.
They're lost.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, this was the cost, cost estimate we had in that study. Notice we have Elk, we have Almond, and then we have combined below. The above is pumping it all the way down to near the treatment plant. We have a pumping station pumping it down there. That's what the top is, 10,000. If Elk.
And Mary.
It's, it's that way. Pumping it down where?
Down south.
Down to Elk.
Well, over to Elkhart, okay?
Yeah.
So that's what your price is, and I think. Is around that, you'd have, you'd have to, um, then have Elkhart to county, most of this is, this includes a treatment facility, paying to add to it. If you get rid of this bottom and add a little bit, maybe at 11 or 12 million. And the school's part of that. And the, I talked to Bob, but the, if you, when they do engineering for wastewater, the school's at 20 gallons a person. And for a house, it's 100 gallons per person. You had 15, based upon the school's projections to the end of the decade here, next four years, their student population at these three facilities will be approaching, uh, 2,000. Then if you add the, the staff, that's 175 or so, because it was 150 and have to go to 200. So I don't know how many they, anyway, the point is you're getting up to 2,200, over 2,000, figure that, divide, take 20 times, 20 gallons times, that's 40,000, over 40,000 gallons a day. That's by house edge there. Divide that 40,000 a day, divide 100, and I have a population equivalent of 400 people, nearly a slice of Almond. And that can be used to, plus Elkhart, what they have, to establish that revolving fund basis for getting revolving funds by, by the county, because they, for a loan, through their revolving fund. So I think there's a, there has to be a lot of detail here, but if we get the county, but the way it happens is the county will take out the funding and then you pay it back. But, um, we got a school here already that would be paying. So I don't, I don't know how that would work, it's probably going to have to figure it out. But having that school here, that's a 400 population that you'd use. And then they also have a non-sewer community where you get funding, but that would be where you'd have to probably bring sewer into somebody, residents that don't have it. But there's, there's, I think there's a good way. But there's, there's, I think there's a good way to do it. And like I said, now's the time is right for Elkhart because they gotta decide to spend some more money on that treatment and that's only gonna last a short period. Because I haven't met with any consultant or.
They just spent five million on what they were doing here this last little idiot.
For the water?
Yep.
Yeah. So that's.
And their coons and whatnot.
Yeah, so if.
Last year.
I have talked to Brad, I talked to Katie, their new city administrator. And I think Brad's the one that's the most on top of and the most influential in that council. And he's over there, you tell him he's as far as the council. But anyway, but they have not been charging fees, like connection fees and stuff. They just been paying for the taxpayer that. So if they would get their act together and start, you know, as development occurs. I know Ankeny for the Ullin Collar and them down there, they were offered to have a hook up at fifty-six hundred dollars an acre. And so yet, those people on one hundred thirty-fourth street have already think they're gonna go and go into Ankeny, but when I talk to your Jensen, they're holding off until see them. You know, we can get there. The acreage is, because those people want to develop along one hundred thirty-fourth street. So, and also this is, this is how the payments were made on the, this goes back to the Rock Creek Sewer.
And it's just.
So this goes back, but this is their payment schedule. And that was Rock Creek and that was a total of fifty-one million in two thousand eight. So you can guess what that's gonna be. Anyway, but they also, Polk County paying for the sewer off Pleasant Hill. I can't, because they paid, they just paid for it all and provided connection to some of the schools.
Did Polk County say they weren't at all interested in paying for it?
Uh, I.
It was not a situation for them, so they.
Well, that's why I gotta show the benefit, but if you were dealing with a couple of staff people, that's the same old everything.
The guy I was talking to was the head guy.
Who's that?
Rob.
We, we had a meeting with Andrew Land and Eric Putnam and John Norris, county manager, who was since then fired. And Putnam and.
Is that Andrew Land or Stowe Air? Is that good or bad that guy?
Uh, for the.
Anyway.
It's a reset.
That's why if you, we need to get a lot of people on the board. We can Elkhart, the school. Alman, well, like you see here, county gets about twenty, over twenty-eight million a year for Prairie Meadows. Over twenty, they get about fifteen point nine for rent. You get five percent of profit up to a certain point and above that point you get one percent.
Oh, don't we own Prairie Meadows?
Yeah.
Polk County?
And then they're not, it's, it's, the thing is, that's not tax money. I mean, it's harder than, say, oh, we're gonna take these, these, these taxes and make it that. This is really peanuts or what, compared to what the projects they take on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then you show, like I said here, the economic impact. You could add employment, we can figure that out too, but then you got Elkhart, Elk, I think would be all be, it'd be foolish because, I mean, if you're the county, if you're looking at the revenue that be generated, because the county service, a lot of it goes to social services, my understanding, I brought on the hospital. So there's an economic benefit, like we identified the cost. You're like, they do cost benefit, now we're identifying benefit.
I think we should move forward on this.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna talk to, we get Elkhart, we get Elkhart, Alman, and you get the school here, and you get, we got our new county supervisor. I mean, there's, then you figure out how you gotta pay for it. And the fact to bring that sewer, we got a school system here, we gotta get the school on board and stuff. But we need these property owners too coming up. I know we have Mule and Haller and Harmon and those people realize we could bring a sewer on one hundred thirty-fourth street that they'll be a little dog and use taxman financing to improve roads. And we could actually probably, I think we can get some developers in here too.
Yeah, we need letters of signed commitments from Polk County, the school, Elkhart.
Yeah. I think for property owners, we're gonna start with support because when it comes time to develop, then we'll have our whole assessment thing figured out. Elkhart's gonna work, but we're actually supposed to be doing that for Elkhart. But see, that's usually on a project, by project basis. You don't like, I'm gonna bring a sewer line, then you'll figure that cost and then you'll assess all the people in that area instead of the district.
That'd be plus if we move forward with this.
Yeah, well, we, let's move forward and get property owners and receive this.
Uh, you know, first things first, let's, I wanna get this comp plan.
Yeah.
Done and we're gonna work hard on that.
When you have the county supervisor, I'd say, hey, you may help with sewer.
That would, that will be in my mayor's comments right now. Well, I guess we can, we can do it right now, but everybody write on your calendars, please. Monday, we have a council meeting. We'll be talking about getting prepared and I hope everybody is prepared to ask some questions. But on Wednesday, the twenty-third of April, at four o'clock, prior to four o'clock, Jill Walter, the new county supervisor, will be handing a check from Prairie Meadows to the school system. And then she is to come over here and meet with the city council. And you know, that's not only a meeting, just a meet and greet and talk to, but I have some things on my agenda that I would like to bring up to her and just share with you. One of them is one that we've been working on for a long time and that's getting the county secondary roads to put a stop sign up here at the intersection at sixth, or up right out here at the co-op. And the problems, and show her the problems that we have had getting county staff to work with us on that. The other thing that I would really like to talk to her about is the different aspects of, of the sewer problem or lack thereof that the city of Alman has that we just don't, we don't have anybody at Polk County government that's, that is supporting, backing us, pushing for us, for the northern part of the county, period. I know that Brownell was six months lame duck, not really into the job, I guess. And then also the lawsuits and the firing of the county manager and all those different things, they are a hot mess down there. And they have been a hot mess and they will be a hot mess, I think, for a while longer. They, they're just not, and, and they're, they're, I think their budget was seven million dollars short, of which they've covered it with reserves. But they are, any of them looking to fund any new projects, any, any of that kind of stuff right now. Not to say that in the future, something might break loose and they would do that. But that's why, you know, we need to work with the supervisor and Meester and Kim and be united on one, one project that will serve. First, number one, serve what we want it to serve. And number two, has a realistic chance of, of happening. Now, we know we spent fifteen thousand dollars, the school, Polk County and us, on a study that went to Elkhart. It's twenty million dollars. We've also looked at one down here, down by the triple box culvert, that was another twenty million dollars. And, and you know, there's two projects that I know of, Joe Walter has not even looked at or been able to study or anything. And so, you know, my experience with the board of supervisors is each supervisor has an area that they are responsible for. When they wanna push a project, they go up and down the hallway and they line up another two votes to do the project. Or to get the project into the pipeline to be done. Whether Jill Walter will recognize that and do that, I don't know. I don't know, but that is how it has always worked. Each supervisor will trade, you want something over here, I want something over here. That's just the nature of the beast in Polk County government. Honest to God, that's just exactly what it is. So, but that's, that's one thing on, on my list is the sewer, sewer situation. The other thing would be, I'm all, I'm all dismayed at the slowness with what's going on with the park down here. You know, we're gonna be going after, we kinda missed the.
Are you skipping around the agenda here, Bob?
No, this is just, he brought up this stuff here, you know, and I just wanted to get it off, get it done with. I wanted, would you go to the end of the meeting?
Well, that's when your mayor's comments are.
Yeah, I know, but he kinda brought up the sewer situation, so. But anyway, I'll save the, the last one here for afterwards. But that's, that's where we're at on that stuff and we can talk about it after we go through the rest of the action and discussion items. So is there any other questions that you have?
Yes, I do have a question with regard to the sewer, sanitary sewer system and whatnot. And we're, has anybody been in contact with Water Works? Are they?
They have nothing to do with it.
Well, they've got to bring water, someone, somebody's gotta bring the water.
Yeah.
This study here.
If they're not able to meet projections up here, they'll probably be actively can't be against us.
I mean, it would just be prudent to proactive if we got their opinion.
Once a year, we need with the board to have a direction.
Here's, uh, here's, in here, we addressed water and that sewer study.
Okay.
And actually Meester Kim is involved. See, the current route comes down, this is, it's a yellow, so comes that's in here, Elkhart. Way down, we have the Bonderet Water Tower, but it was, it was a booster station that plenty had. And they get that to go to Bonderet's building their own water power and water treatment facility, but they're also blocking capacity and they're building a booster station. And once that is done, our mill building water, just like a million gallons a day. And we got a three hundred thousand gallon tank here in the Bonderet available to us. But you have to buy about a certain amount. So a million gallons a day is. A hundred thousand, a thousand population. And that's where you start, but that'll take you a long way until you have a.
And you know, the nuts and bolts and the numbers aren't really relevant.
But it's, they're building, they're doing it in. But Bonderet, we're on the Bonderet, takes all of the water out of that northeast and all their own. And actually, you may be able to buy that from them, but we're not, you know, we don't need that, but to grow, but it's available, it's available to us. And it's the Bonderet Water Tower might be used as a lot of their own. So that'd be the water works tower. And then we got our own, it's a hundred thousand gallons and stuff.
All right, let's, let's, everybody, we have all the information for Mike to proceed. So he'll, he'll be working with the planning and zoning, our planning and zoning people will be the first size to be working on this with sharing. And then, once they will it down to what, where we'd be, then we'll be doing it.
Got a council ready, so, I mean, maybe have some joint meetings.
That's the next step is this to go to our.
Let's go through and get that, get that approved, we need to go through planning commission, publish meetings and stuff. Get input is where zoning people, basically that's the basis for zoning people lands, so. And there's some land use, for example, Rogers, I struggle because they got a big, that four mile creek up there, there's a big wide flood plain on their property. So actually I'd put like a mixed use or where they come in to do a plan development, I thought if I taught them use of some type of really neat development, but they just do single family. And so that's where they need to come in and we need to talk to them, but it's a higher value with that flood plain there, based on what we're proposing. We're not far from sixty-nine. So that develops, you get taxman financing, we can improve that road and then you have Harmon and stuff, so.
If we get this, you know, get it all done, then, then this goes to city development board, doesn't it?
No, we just have it.
We have it.
If anything, so that was send a copy down there. Send that, like I said, that urban service area boundary with Ankeny, it's all whether with that sewer line or not, that Eric's, we're gonna wait and see because those people want it on Ankeny. So I, I really think we can sell this idea because, well, Ankeny, Polk County's over five hundred thousand people, was their budget about four hundred billion? And with the payments on this?
Three hundred.
Three hundred sixty-eight.
So we're going to committee planning and zoning to community input?
Yes.
And then we're going to council to okay?
Yeah.
What's the timeline?
Well, how fast we can get meetings set up?
I think we should have it done by July first.
Yeah, let's do that.
July, August, something like that?
And we, and this is a good process though too to get support for sewer from these landowners that wanna, you know, sell their land or develop.
Okay, we, thank you. How is the population where you get notified about the different?
Public summaries.
Yeah, but how are they going to know that things are happening?
It's a.
Depending on.
Well, we got them up there on, on TV and.
It's on.
They have all our minutes.
On the computer.
We posted in three different places around town.
I know. Things are the same Mondays and Wednesdays.
And probably.
And then the newsletter.
I, if, in my thing again, I, I made a point of saying, when I was at this table, I made a point of physically sending something to each resident in town.
Maybe with a water bill?
We used, back then we had a printed water bill that got mailed to everybody.
Oh, now it's.
And now, now it's probably ninety, ninety-five percent of people do electronic monthly through the Water Works.
And that's how most people get their information is off the internet that.
But you gotta know to look for it.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe we.
And if I wasn't sitting here, I wouldn't even, I would have no clue to even looking for it.
It's a pretty big document, we'll, we'll, we'll be.
We'll get it out.
Diligence to get it out. A lot of people don't know about it, it's just a lot of people don't get too fired up about it.
Right.
Okay, let's move on here to, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. And move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two-nine, which is a resolution authorizing the repair of eight fifty northeast one hundred thirty-fourth avenue stormwater tile. And Logan, do you wanna? No, what is it? And Logan, do you want to... No, what is it? First of all, let's do, let's do a motion, get it on the table here. Motion to approve, make a motion, second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
It needs to be done?
Needs to be done.
Logan, is this, this is a little vague here. Is this what you and I have been talking about? Is this a different project? This is completely different. This was what we had a 30-minute conversation on that first big item listed on my report at the last work session. So this is, this is just continuing on with, we're going one after the other through the water issues in these states and we're going up the line and we're gonna find the source eventually. But we're gonna make repairs and do everything we, we need to do. So this was about digging holes and... Yep, it's same thing I did with the, the last one. So that was, that's already taken care of. Now we're just moving on to the next one, doing the same exact thing that I did on, on that one that we spoke, spoke about, that was just a little further down in between those residents that were sitting there. So are we gonna have to do this for every phase?
Well, it keeps people informed and...
Well, it's, it involves a lot. You could add my address to this, to the west. I've got water coming under, either going through my yard.
So what I had asked to have added to the agenda, not to this work, or to the next work session, actually, was a proposal to change that entire system using the city easement that runs along the backside of those properties and adding a larger tile and bypassing these states to the east and to the west. And getting all of that water issue out of the old kind of cobbled together. It's a little bit of this pipe, it's a little bit of that pipe, it's this big, it's that big. It's got roots in it, it's collapsed. It's just eliminating all of that and putting a new around it. You know, like 10-inch pipe that runs along the backside or an 8-inch that go out or to get rid of the 4-inch that's all over the place in the top column. That's kind of what I was hoping that that was, but I think that is coming up at work session? That would be coming up at work session. This one basically just is everywhere that I visually inspected and I know that there is active water. We have to make repair if it's in our easement or right of way. So this one's just follow-up on, on all that. So we're just going down the line and making repairs on everything that's within our easement and right of way, regardless of whether we end up abandoning that line and because that technically, that line will still be used for all the residents who are hooked up to it with their floor drains. I know there's a lot, there's quite a few around. So that line will still be, it will be abandoned from the field. So there will no, there will no longer be field drainage going through there. But there will be, you know, floor drains in basements and things like that, which will cut down substantially on that.
All right, and we're here to actually vote on this $5,000 repair authorization?
Yes.
All right. I just, I want to make sure that it was clear.
Yeah. Nope. I'll, I'll get up the designs and everything for the next meeting and...
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? I'll make the motion. Anybody got it? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Next item on the agenda is the item number 2025 D030. It's a resolution for support approving the wage for a city employee. You have that one in front of you. Pretty, pretty much, what?
First one's Gary.
The first one is for here, we raised it to $20 an hour. Do I have a motion? Make the motion. I'll second.
I'll second.
Harry, no discussion, roll call.
Andrew.
Yes.
President?
You?
What? No.
Yes.
Yeah. Harry, all in one vote. Okay, next item on the agenda is approving a resolution for support approving wage for another city employee, director of public works, for $31 an hour. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Second.
Second.
Harry, no discussion. A call per vote, or yeah, call per vote.
Andrew.
Aye.
President?
Yes.
Woods? No. Smith?
Yep.
Two. Okay. The next, the next one is a resolution on support wage for employee. This would be for city clerk slash city administrator. Although, I'm sorry.
He can't vote. She knows that and it was called. There needs to be a revote.
Okay.
Understood. Smith abstains. I don't necessarily care.
Still cares.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks for that catch. Next item on the agenda, we have a motion and a second. We have a discussion phase. Discussion.
You did a motion for it.
See, I had a motion. Oh, we didn't get a motion on that? You got, kind of, too many of them, too many of them here. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Harry, no discussion, roll call.
Andrew.
Aye.
President?
No.
Woods? No. Smith?
No.
Or death.
Hold on, I'm confused.
This...
Is this only for the 31 amount?
Yes.
Then I'll go, I'll go yes.
Okay, I have a yes. Harry, three to two. We'll put them to bed for the budget. Well, the only other thing I wanted to just bring up was it's important that the council be around to meet with Jill Alteringer, get to know her and show her support for these items. I don't know if anybody else or anything on the list that...
What was the date?
What?
What was the date of that?
It's the next Wednesday, 23rd at 4 o'clock. It's, they're over there, but she's coming over here after, after...
That's dated 23rd at 4 o'clock.
He sent it dated 23rd, yes.
What's her name?
Jill Alteringer.
Jill?
Jill Alteringer. You said that right.
Yes. I'm not to have an agenda, just in case.
And she...
Pope County Supervisor really like...
I'm gonna look her up on the internet and see what she's all about.
And, you know, the other thing is, is the park, and my only gripe about the park is it's awful slow. That's all.
Yeah, we're slow.
You know what? They supply, Pope County Board of Supervisors supplies the Pope County Conservation Board to pay their money. They approve their budget. And so, and Pope County Conservation has really got themselves into a lot of, well, they've bought Sleepy Hollow, which is millions of dollars and they're trying to do that. Anyway, that's, that's where that is. Any else?
I did have a thing. I'm not really getting a clear answer when it comes to my question about the incoming water versus this planning of the, kind of, the wastewater. This, all of the numbers and all of the planning and all of that has to deal directly with sewer. The size of the pipe, the number of manholes, where it's been going, yada, yada. Is their cost involved with bringing the water in as well as getting it out?
Every, every year, we have a sit-in meeting afternoon with the Duane Water Works. And they tell us what their, what their rates are gonna be. Usually, they raise them. But they also talk about, you realize that we get our water from the Duane Water Works and they wheel it around Altoona and then up north to this tower. And then they feed all of it, south waters. They are not, if there would be, say, we had a couple hundred houses that were gonna be built up here, they would have to probably make some, some modifications to their pumps to get more water up here a little faster to serve. But what they...
What can you do with sewer?
Who pays for pipes?
Well, we do. Well, it's outside the city limits. All, I don't believe we are responsible for it. We're responsible for the pipes inside the city, right?
Right, yes.
Because when they brought it, we had, I think, they were connected with some...
Right, so we have to look at that as an additional cost to the sewer. Because this is all dealing with future use and future cost or future growth and whatnot. There would be growth in the water service as well, which is not being considered here outside the city.
And then the developers put it in the property they developed. They paper all that in their...
Usually, the developer will go up on a piece of ground, plat it, and then they come to the city and we go through the process. It was all planning and zoning and they plat it and they figure out what needs to get it to the curb and then what gets into the plat. It's a process.
No, I understand that. But again, it feels like we're dancing around. This is a direct cost to the city. Is there a direct cost to the city with supplying the water as well as getting rid of it?
The city's already got its water supply.
Now, if you've got new development, you know...
If it's inside city limits, yeah. So the answer is yes, and it hasn't been outlined.
I think the only cost would be differences in the amount of water that we consume out of there might...
There's no way the pipe.
They make the pipe and then the developer takes it and puts it into their development.
The cost of the lot.
The, the developer puts it in by the houses where a man lives. The developer put all that pipe down in there.
So there will not be another project that looks like this for incoming water?
No.
No.
Okay.
I got input. I see here that we pay Jim for reviewed ordinances to registration of city council members. I'd like to see the answer to that with, with the billing. And then the one on attended city council meetings or what, I'd like to see the answer just for my knowledge, for, you researched it and billed us for it and all we get is that the question was asked of you, but we don't have an answer?
Or was...
Well, she can, you can give it to her and she can give it to the whole council. Reviewed ordinances, re-resignation of city council member in response to the clerk? I'd like to know the answer because then if I'm asked, I, I know the answer. We, you did the research. Everybody should be able to enjoy the, the answer here. So, we pay him for questions asked, let's let the whole city council know. Yeah? So on these two here that we got, I'd like to know the answer, so...
The resignation, when we did talk about in council at the work session meeting?
I was gone one meeting, I think, when all this came out in Texas, so...
The deal is, you don't have a special election or the council can appoint somebody. I think you were here, you said that.
I think I might have been in...
Yeah.
This is just like the last, the last...
You said that, yeah, you can appoint them. And it permanently lasts until the next election. So the person would be appointed till...
Maybe you're not here.
I don't think I was. I was in Texas.
A lady was on the phone.
Yeah, yeah. So then the other was the campaign signs?
Okay, so there was a lady that called and she was angry about campaign signs in Olive just a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
So I did research and it's illegal to pay people who move them, but I wanted to make sure that I, before I answered that lady's email, that I spoke with Jim about it for us.
Yeah, I worked through the ordinances and forced them to take it down.
No, yeah. Yeah. There was a lady from Pope City that was mad about campaign signs in Olive.
Yeah. Well, I was watching a thing and, and I think I was watching and seeing they were a prominent politician and they were trying to tell him he couldn't have signs in his yard. And he said, would you try to take the rights of my wife away? And they had to shut up because she's got the right to have signs in his yard, whether he's in politics or not. So that was the end of that.
People in Supreme Court justices.
Yeah, I think so. But it's her. Well, it might be him, but she has the same right and...
Since it was his hack, since it was in the House, they all decided it's him too.
Yeah, well, she's got the right to have signs.
They could attack her, but they couldn't attack him.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, I got two things for our work session. Uh, I wanna, I'm just, I'm curious about cleaning our streets of all the sand. And I also, I know, and also, I also wanted to discuss credit, our city credit card limits. Who all has it? Just first and clear. For, for... Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. Could I make one quicker? I guess the comment or whatever. I guess I should maybe apologize for what you guys are going through now with sewer and everything because it came up 25, 28 years ago when things were much similar and Ankeny was still five miles away and school was only half its size. But myself, as mayor, sat down with the school superintendent. We had some discussions for a short while when they were looking at the first time they did something with our sewer bills. And wanted to know if the city wanted to come in and join in and put sewer through the whole town. I said, well, we can't do that because there's no way the city could ever come up with the money to do it. So...
Who's in the deck?
I didn't, but that was, like I said, 25, 28 years ago.
The thing is, is we've repaired all that water debt, so...
Violent.
Well, the 40-year-old one that we were paying on when we had to put new water lines in because the old ones were fatal. Both of them.
I made a motion to adjourn. I'll say it.
Did you want something?
Just to add something to the work session, it has to do with that retired debt and the money's still being collected and where they go and about having some sort of water, directly water-related emergency fund?
There is one. That's what that water is. It's a company now.
And it's separate from the general, right?
Yeah. Duane Water Works is actually drilling it.
It's like a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
And that's a line on your water bill.
All right, aye. Yes, I'm aware of that portion. I just wanted to make sure that that was going directly for...
Absolutely.
Water, drainage.
Water infrastructure.